Hosting meeting, if I scroll my mouse down to the bottom of the screen.
Yeah.
Where you see participants, chat, share screen, record reactions. I don't know if you see that. If you don't, you can tap the participants button. It's going to be easier for you because you're going to be able to see who raised their hand and.
Yeah, I have a whole, the whole participant window now.
Alright.
Just want to clear that.
Really great to hear the Padres, even though I thought I wasn't going to hear them tonight.
When you're actually hosting. Anyway, what?
Yeah, I don't know what to do. Seriously. It's like, really, is he getting through the blow thing or?
I'm gonna. When he gets up there, there's on the board. Because there's a lot of background noise, so bear with me. We're reviewing Delmar Heights Elementary School. Sort of eleventh hour request. For the school which found out at the last minute that it needed a coastal development permit. Of which we're charged with reviewing the project as it comes with our community plan. So we're going to hear from the applicant and then I'm going to give everyone that's, that's. That's joined us tonight, the opportunity to speak. The applicant will have five minutes initially and then. Everyone that's interested in speaking will have three minutes and I ask that you self-monitor. I have a timer here, but it's just a little awkward conducting a Zoom meeting, so. If you can, please limit your time to three minutes because we have a lot of people to hear from. What I'm going to do is just provide just a little bit of an introduction and overview. And talk about the relevant. Community plan policies, at least as I see them. That that pertain to this project. I'll have the applicant present and I'll have people, I'd like to ask that anyone in favor of the project. Raise their hand and then I'll select you in the order that your hand was. And then after, after that, then anyone that that would like to say something in opposition to the project. Raise your hand and, and I'll give you that opportunity to speak as well. After that, then what I'll do is I'll open it up for board discussion. Our purpose is, as a subcommittee. Is we've been asked. Recommendations to the board. The board will actually review this. In additional detail. And take our recommendation. Whatever they're worth. That said, let me give you a little bit of background about this project. There was an eleventh hour. Determining, as I said, that the project needed a coastal development. And this is a project that. Oh my gosh. Full warning, so I'm having trouble, so I'm a little distracted here. Eleven information that the project. Needed coastal development. And one of the districts. Yelling policies. Sort of the question at hand is whether they're also exempt from our, the coastal land use plan. Impulses our community plant policies. So hopefully the applicant can address that. But as it stands now, there was a bottom measure that that was passed. And the community school needs were placed at the top of the list. Due to the age and condition of our existing facilities. So there's available, the plans are drawn, the project was getting ready to start demolition in September. And then the city told them, hey, no, hold up. There's a permit that you needed, you need a coastal development permit. And we need to review this project. And so it sets a local at the environmental review, as I understand. For the project, which is why. We're looking at it today. So our role as a planning board is to ensure. And policies of our adopted community plan. And I'm going to share a screen right here, which I think might help. So bear with me here. And I'll show you my outline. For coastal development permit to be approved, there need to be. And I've identified these and we'll come back to these later. But essentially, the project needs to comply with policies in our community plan. In order for these, the findings to be able to be found. The community plan. Is an adopted statement of policy for the growth improvements of our sub area. With which, of which the school is one. And there are policies that I've written and I want to go through these. And I want to talk about the relevant parts of the community plan as they apply to the project because during the course of the applicant's presentation. I think it's important to think about these policies as they apply to the project, so bear with me on that. Key policies that run through the community plan that are relevant. To this project is that all development adjacent to the open space area shall be designed to reduce visual and development impacts. Well, this project obviously built right on the reserve edge. The construction of public projects shall avoid impacts to residential neighborhoods. Usable public parks and active playing fields should be provided within the planning area for use by all age groups. And there was a fairly recent plan update, I say fairly recent, I don't know, within the last 20 years. But there were five items that were brought up and they're, they're very relevant to this project and I'm going to, I'm going to discuss them individually right now. Item one was the development and construction impacts to environmentally sensitive areas. Including sedimentation, erosion, visual impacts and encroachment, these are, these are items, issues that were identified as being important. Item number two was the lack of passive and active rec park facilities were identified. Three was the lack of protection of environmentally sensitive resources that was identified. And four, the environmental impacts associated with public utility and facility projects, of which this is one, this is considered a public facility. And five, there was a recognition for the need to reduce auto trips and improve air quality regionally throughout the implementation. Or through the implementation of transportation demand, management strategies, transit oriented developments and other measures. That could be as simple as improving our, our trail networks. And then many of you may know this, but I'm going to go over it again anyway, the coastal act of 1976 established certain planning and development requirements. That need to be met to protect coastal resources. The recommendations and development criteria. From the coastal act are incorporated into individual elements of the plan. And those that aren't in the individual elements are in the main, are in the main body of the plan or in appendix E when we'll go through those. In, in detail, as they relate to the project. So the first element I want to start with, and I'll just go through these quickly. Is the resource management, open space element. And basically, the goal is to preserve, enhance and restore all natural open space and sensitive resource areas, including the Torrey Pines State Park Reserve Extension. Policies in that element related to this project are that land uses adjacent to environmentally sensitive habitats shall not negatively impact those areas. And two, provide pedestrian bicycle linkages so that all open space areas will be connected. The specific proposals I've highlighted because they're really directly relevant are that new developed, public and private. Shall not encroach into or negatively impact the reserve extension. And, excuse me, adequate buffer areas and appropriate landscape screenings. Between development and the reserve extension to avoid significant visual and erosion impacts from construction. Future development adjacent to Torrey Pines Reserve Extension shall provide for adequate buffer areas. Development proposals shall provide adequate setbacks to avoid significant erosion, visual or sediment impacts from construction. Development shall be provided to prevent the necessity, necessity of fire breaks being. On reserved property. And landscaping properties adjacent to the extension shall not use invasive plant species, landscaping adjacent to this area should use plant species naturally occurring in the area. The transportation element basically just talks about, you know, the fact that children were bused to the school. I bring this up because about 20 years ago, the district canceled busing. And that appears to have adversely impacted the neighborhood. And it was never studied, so for whatever that's worth. The goal of the transportation element was to provide a network, a system of bikeways and pedestrian facilities that will encourage bicycling. And walking as a means of transportation. Relevance here is that the, the school site does connect to the reserve trails. Which further connect to residential neighborhoods throughout the sub area. The community facilities discusses our park needs and. Period is underserved by about 15.3 acres, in fact, I don't think we have a park in our neighborhood. But we've been fortunate enough to have two schools. And the districts have been generous enough to let us use those fields. But it should be noted that Delmar Heights Elementary School. Makes up about 50%. Of our current active recreational. Area. So 50% of the active rec space that we currently have is made up of the, the fields. And blacktop areas of the Delmar Heights Elementary School. So again, the, the facilities element really talks about the need to provide adequate park and rec facilities. To maximize accessibility of the community to these facilities. And ensure that students have safe, direct access to the schools. And ensure that new facilities are designed to minimize or preclude adverse impacts to environmentally sensitive resource areas, again, a reoccurring theme. So direct policies. Related to that. Bear with me. Is that we should be exploring, the plan. Policy was that we, we explore joint use agreements with the elementary schools or they should, joint use agreement should be secured. If a school should ever be declared surplus by the district, they should be purchased by the city and developed as neighborhood or community parks. So those are the main elements of the plan. Now appendix E deals with specific coastal program policies. One of which is clearly, clearly related to the project at hand and I'm going to go through that. So the state coastal act, it should be mentioned, states that scenic. And visual qualities of the coastal area should be considered and protected as, as a resource of public importance. And the Torrey. Planning area possesses many highly scenic open space areas in dramatic distance, that's obvious to all of us, I'm sure. This plan contains numerous recommendations, policies and implementing actions focusing on the preservation of these visual resources, including item number one. Future development. Torrey Pines Reserve Extension shall provide for adequate buffer areas. Development proposals shall provide adequate setbacks to avoid significant erosion, visual or sediment impacts from construction. Setbacks still also be required to prevent fire breaks from being constructed on reserve property or into offsite sensitive. Encroaching or removal of vegetation shall be allowed within the Torrey Pines State Reserve Extension. And the two other policies, while they're not directly applicable. As they're written to public facilities, I think it's probably the. I think it was the intent of the plan, that's my interpretation. That it's in keeping with the spirit of the plan. To say that development, rather than just strictly new residential development, I think. All development should be compatible with the existing neighborhood. Or neighborhoods and designed to blend into the adjacent natural open space areas. It goes on to say that only low profile dwellings designed to fit with the natural terrain and not be visually prominent from the canyon floor shall be allowed. And then for development located in visually prominent areas adjacent to open space areas, building colors and materials shall be limited to earth tones. And colors subordinate to the surrounding natural environment. Which minimize the development's contrast with the surrounding hillsides and open space areas. I have relevance query, but as you can see, I think comments. Would, would. Tell us that that policy really applies to anything that happens within our sub area. So that said, I'd like to invite the applicant. Who I don't see here, if you could raise your hand. Just raised. Chris. Delahanti is in the audience and I had. Two other people in the audience, raise their hand and then, and then lower them. If it's something of extreme importance now, we can address it. But right now, I'm, I'd like to get the floor to the applicant and share my, and allow you to share your screen, Chris, I assume that. Let's see, let me make sure that that can happen. Chris, do you have the ability to share your screen?
I do.
Okay, great.
No, I'm sorry, I thought I did, I do not.
Oh, you don't.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Alright, Chris, you've got the floor, I'm going to ask that you keep your presentation to about five minutes if you can and then we'll open it up for. People to speak after that.
Chris, if you're unable to share your screen, I might be able to do it for you.
Yep, I think I have it, John, I think it was just allowing it, thank you though. So I, I wasn't sure quite how much time, so I, I'm going to start related to what Adam was speaking to, which were the items related to coastal, I can go. Back in the presentation a little bit to share other items, I know there were some questions that were brought to my attention. But I want to make sure that I'm respectful of the time, I appreciate the, the board and the PRC providing this time, I appreciate you. Creating a special board meetings, PRC meeting for us and I was fortunate enough to speak to the board as a group in June and share a little bit about this project. Talk a little bit about the overall project and answer some questions, but I've tried to put this together related to some of the items, Adam, that you. You just spoke to that are pertinent to the Torrey Pines Community Plan. So you just mentioned a few of those items and when we look at the Torrey Pines Community Plan and some of these. I, I did have earlier in the presentation a bunch about our community engagement process, we did go through. A fairly robust community engagement process over the course of a number of months, starting in April of 2019. After the passage of the school bond and the facilities master plan update. And through that process, we did have the community start with our architects, John Baker's here, Scott Morland from Baker Wiki. And we started with no design and had over 400 community members join us for those, those events. And help us to come up with a design that I think does fit to, to the pieces that we spoke to. We have kept to Louis Loafed roofs. The district has focused on ensuring HVAC systems are screened at ground level. It, it comes at a little bit more cost, but ensuring that it fits more with the community, with the design. And, and the aesthetic that we have in the Delmar Heights community. Buildings are primarily located adjacent to the eastern slope and especially when you look at the buildings that house our students. Which moves them further away from the canyon rim where we currently have multiple portal classrooms that are, have no running water and are highly combustible. So we had that in mind and trying to move our students further away from that canyon rim. And over the course of our design process, at least three updates were made to move buildings further to the east, to address public views, to address the. The, the fields and the desire for larger fields. And in this case, we do have no portals adjacent to the western, western property line in the reserve, we've moved our buildings back from that property line. Which addresses improvements to the. The vistas looking up from the, from the, the reserve itself. You mentioned the resource management in the open space, when we look at that, we did design with the reserve in mind, our buildings are intentionally designed, avoiding two story buildings. Again, looking at low slopes roofs and no HVAC equipment on, on our roofs. We proposed campus buildings that would not be visible from the slopes below, the buildings were set back from the top of the slope. With photography intervening brush and trees. We did attempt some visual impact and lighting impacts that were considered in our mitigated negative declaration, providing daylight use from Durango Drive. And that location was selected specifically because of the reserve, so it was looking across the reserve, trying to provide a vista and a viewpoint that the community would be. Be able to look from and one that would address the concerns or the, the goals of the. The Torrey Pines Community Plan that Adam spoke to. Setbacks, bioswivel systems and in addition corrections to failing outfalls are included, so. Both of the outfalls currently on the campus, one at the west side and one at the south side are failing. They are in very bad shape and we have actually worked with the reserve extension and the Torrey Pines. To come and be able to get some of the, the plants that were growing and the issues that were occurring there, part of this project would correct that. And ensure that we don't have the outfall issues that we currently have. And then our landscaping materials specifically exclude and protect against invasive plant species. I did include some pictures because the stormwater outfalls have presented a problem, they have been an issue that we haven't been able to resolve without an update. They do reside here and here and we will be making improvements, fixing those outfalls and. Getting rid of the, the issues that are currently occurring in that area. We also have improvements to the site based on the fire safety and you mentioned setbacks as well as fire breaks. The existing campus is not up to code and not, not. It's not sufficient for a campus, an elementary school campus at this time. We have increased our fire hydrants, we moved our buildings further from the canyon edge, we have our classrooms, as I said, at the far eastern edge. And we are building to 2019 California Building Code. Currently, again, we have portals that are combustible material with no running water. We will be also, they are designed to be ignition resistant construction. And when we looked at the city's code, we're looking at the combination of the setbacks as well as the building materials that we'll be using to be able to address that. It is a 59 year building, we will now have a 2019 California Building Code and will be approved by DSA. One of the differences between our school district and many of the projects that will come before this group. Our two schools are the only schools within Torrey Pines Planning Board's boundary. And so with the school district, the oversight for us is the Division of State Architect under the Department of Generous Services and they do have. Fire life safety as part of their review. And then finally, look at the bottom here, the, the current fire lane and the existing bottlenecks that we have with entering to the campus cause issues. We have issues with fire trucks and emergency vehicles being able to get around to the side, being able to access. And to be honest, being able to fight a fire that may occur in the canyon, which would be addressed with our updated plan. And we are now up to code so that all those emergency vehicles would be able to access. Just as a visual, these light gray are the current buildings, the dark gray is our. Proposed plan and then the red are our classrooms, which as you can see, these are currently classrooms, they're currently classrooms. All of our classrooms are not much further from that canyon edge. And then just the other two pieces that you mentioned to try to stay within the five minutes, transportation and parking does come up. You mentioned the connecting of trails, we are expanding parking spaces on the site, which does bring a parking, which is part of coastal, bringing car parking off of our. Community streets and onto a project's. A project site, so our parking spaces go up to 81, we are also encouraging, as was mentioned, the. Having lower emissions with EV charging and car vanpool spaces, we will be including bike racks for staffs, there's encouragement of biking. And we do have a, an much improved access at the south end where our community will be able to. Access the trail heads through both the steps here and an ADA accessible ramp or from this point be able to access the site. As was mentioned, the, the school district has endeavored to be a good partner of the community by leaving our, our campuses open. We recognize that there are not as many park spaces as needed in this community and we have, we have tried to be good. Good neighbors in keeping our campus open by making this, allowing that there is access as well, so that the, the transportation. And the community facility with the ability to access the community resources is maintained and enhanced and. With that, I think I've used much of my five minutes, I'd be happy to speak to any questions you may have, to speak to any. Information on the project or the process reviews to get to this, and we do also have to get two of our architects here, John Baker and Scott Morland, who helped with the design.
Thanks, Chris, well, we're going to be getting, we'll be getting back to you, I'd like actually to open this up to any members. On the committee, the project review committee, actually with that, I'd like to just actually make an introduction, which I neglected to do. And it's. We have Troy Vanforst, we have, who else is, Dan. Jen Swald, who's an architect on the board and Brett Remy, who is on the project review committee as well, so. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to, to add at this point, or should we just hear from people in attendance?
Can I say one thing, Adam? This is Troy, I, I'm not sure if you mentioned Mike Hastings, but I think he's on the call as well. And then I, I just wanted to ask, I sent you a text message, I was wondering if you saw that, it's just a housekeeping.
Yes, I did see that, thanks.
Okay, alright, that was all I had to say.
Mike Hastings, I'm looking for you and I don't see. I don't see him there.
Because it's not a family dinner, so I'm saving everybody the noise, but I can try to.
That's it, anyone? Any questions? I think I might, you know, I want to ask just the applicant at this point. Chris, was, was the district, was the district actually obligated? For us, are they obligated to get a coastal development permit? Because I, I know that you're exempt, you're irregular. But with regards to the community's plan, I believe still required to comply with that, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay. And then. Secondly, mentioning the portable, getting ones that. Portable, or, you know, just need early and then definitely removed. I'm sorry, I I cut out a bit, I didn't hear part of that. So the portable buildings that were always intended to be temporary, that was my understanding? I just wanted to clarify that that the district had intended to remove, never, never remove from the site. Their portable classrooms with typically a lifespan of twenty to twenty-five years. They range in age from give or take twenty, twenty-five years at this point.
Okay.
Hey, Adam, this this is Mike. Is it possible to have you mute everyone's? There's so much feedback, how many of you hear me?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that. Okay, yeah, everyone's muted. Let me, you have the ability to unmute yourself if you can hear me, so, Chris, please do so. Oh, sorry.
Hey, Adam?
Yeah.
I'd say as the the review, project review committee, let's just let the applicant continue and get the comment, and then let's, we could discuss the project after we get all that feedback.
Good idea. So, Chris, my understanding is that you've essentially concluded your presentation at this point. Why don't we have members from the community speak? And if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this point, please raise your hand. And if you don't know how to do that, then unmute yourself and reach out. But I'll allow you to speak, please, as I said, limit your time to three minutes, and I will pick you in the order that your hand was up. So, starting with Jesse Barrett, please. If you could state your name and where you're located as you go into your presentation.
Hello, this is Jesse Barrett, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Adam?
Yeah. Thank you.
Cool. Hello, and thank you to the Torrey Pines Planning Group, Adam, Jake, Dan, Mike, Troy, Liz, Brad, Jeff, Chris with the district, John and Scott, the architects, and members of the community. My name is Jesse Barrett, and I moved to Delmar in nineteen ninety-nine. My wife and I have a third grader and a first grader at Delmar Heights Elementary. I was vice president of the Delmar Heights Stats Club last year, and I'm the incoming president this year. I'm honored to serve as a representative to the Delmar Heights Elementary PTA Board. I really love this community, and there's so many amazing people that make it a wonderful place to live and raise children. The Delmar Heights Elementary Campus is over fifty years old, and it is in desperate need of upgrading. We passed the bond to rebuild the school, and we owe the current and future Delmar Heights Dolphins to match the world-class teaching staff and administration with a wonderful facility to foster great educational experiences, enhance the property values of everyone who lives in this area. The district has done a wonderful job of asking all the stakeholders in the community for their desires and input for this project. The results of this project have been a wonderful compromise that has included multiple revisions based on community input. There are a couple of very selfish, foolish, and malicious people that have tried to put their faulty view of their own self-interests above the well-being of the children of this district and the best interest of the property owners and taxpayers who live here. I'm embarrassed for them and their shortsightedness. We as a community are better than this. We will remember the people who are working for their own faulty self-interests. Our community members, parents, and students are watching. We will overcome. We will do the best for our community, students, and taxpayers. It may take longer and take more effort than we think it should, but we will rise to the challenge. Thank you for your time, and please recommend this project for approval.
Thanks, Jesse. Peter Jensen? Peter, you're muted. Alright, I've unmuted him.
Peter Jensen, resident of City of San Diego. I'm also the president of the Torrey Pines Association, which was involved, lo, these many years ago, in preserving the extension through a huge community effort that actually involved a lot of the schoolchildren up at the Heights School as well. I have just an initial question, I'd like to come back for maybe a further question, but to the architects, to what degree did you work with state park experts and officials? Did you work specifically with our north coast biologist? End of question.
Well, Chris, Chris, I'm happy to try to field that. Peter, my name is John Baker, I'm the one of the owners of Baker New Wiki, New Wiki Design Studio. And we didn't, we didn't work with any of the park communities because this is a public school. And so unless the district is under a joint use agreement of some kind, there's not that connection. The playgrounds and such are designed to respond to the community input that we have, as well as the instructional programs and the educational needs of the campus. As it relates to the biology, the CQ consultant with Placeworks handled most of that. And I can't speak for Duane, and I don't know if he's on the line, but maybe Chris can answer that question with regard to their expertise and how they addressed the biological aspects of the CQ documents.
And I can say that we did meet with the Torrey Pines, a couple of reverends from the Torrey Pines Park as we were going through our initial study process and got input from them. And then we did get inputs as, in in a formal sense, through the the response to comments document. We got a comment and we responded to it in the response to comment document. So we had him, we met with them, and then we did as well get comments from from the state park and have them memorialize in the response to comment document.
Okay. And were their comments favorable to your mitigations?
They had comments relating to I can, if you cut me off, Peter, I can pull it off, and I can take a closer look at exactly what their comments were. We can come back to it, let's cut. Okay. Peter, good questions, anything else to add, Peter?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. Next up, Dee Rich, Delmar School, that is you, I believe. Dee, you're muted.
Hi, I'm Dee Rich, and I we moved, my, my family and I moved to Delmar in nineteen seventy-four, at which point I had became actively involved in the Torrey Pines Planning Group, but also we added some open space along Portofino. Then I, after the, I became very interested in what was going to happen with North City West, and I was one of the people who was responsible for the funding, planning, and stopping the city until they, there were, there were payments for parks and schools, and all those schools were built. So after that, I was served on the Delmar Union School District and the San Diego High School. The reason I am here tonight is I watched this process. I've been to many of the meetings, which I don't know if the other board members have, of the Delmar School District, to watch the interaction. They have opened it up to the public, they've done everything they could. But I am very concerned as someone who was actively involved in selling bonds for all of the schools in North City West as part of the North City West Financing Authority, that delay may cause this school to not be built. We need a new school. All the schools that are fifty years or older have been replaced throughout the region, and it is critical that this school is is done now. If we, if there is too much delay with everything that is going on with finance and the economy, it's possible that we can move to the bottom of the pile. And this school deserves, and our children deserve, to have a school, a new school that is adequate in this day and age. I I know, I lived here, looking at test scores, and that's, and which began my involvement, but not only in quality education, which every realtor looks at, they sell their homes in terms of our schools. We don't want to move to the bottom of the pile, and it may never happen, because the economy and and the potential of bad things happening may cause this school never to be built unless we move ahead in a timely manner. And that's pretty much what I have to say, and I thank you, thank everyone who's worked on this.
Alright, Dee, thank you very much. Let's see, next up would be Greg? Javine?
Hi, thanks, it's Bruce Jaben. My name's Greg Jaben, and my wife and I moved onto Boquita Street, about only seven houses away from the school in nineteen ninety-one. We had a one-year-old, a two-year-old, and a four-year-old at the time, and they're all in their thirties, so time has marched on. It was a great school, we loved the school, we loved having the fields, we loved the open park. We taught our kids how to ride their bikes, fly kites, launch rockets, play soccer, watch Little League, all these great things. And on the weekends, it was our place to go. I definitely am on the fence in terms of the pros and the cons about the school. But the one thing that concerns me, that I just really have more questions than than a comment, I I just want to understand what the original study capacity was. Because my understanding is that when the school was built in nineteen fifty-nine, there was a conditional use permit. And I've heard that the number of students that were allowed by the conditional use permit is three hundred and fifty. Now, in the time that we were there from nineteen ninety-one onward, they kept bringing more and more temporary buildings, the portable classrooms, that obviously became permanent. So I I just wanted to know, what was the original capacity when the school was first built? And then secondly, one thing that troubles me is that the Delmar Unified School District just recently passed a resolution. It's Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty, which basically says that they're not subject to zoning laws. And as a fellow property owner, a neighboring property owner, that doesn't sit with me that well. I would rather that they still kept the zoning that's in place and got a conditional use permit as opposed to now not being subject to any zoning, zoning laws from now into the future. Those of us that have driven by UCSD up on Torrey Pines Road, they aren't subject to zoning laws either. And if you look right across from Estancia or Black Horse Farms, it's it's a mega-city that they built there. They're still constructing new buildings all the time, these ten-story buildings. Obviously, they're not going to build that at Delmar Heights campus, but what's to prevent them from building a five-story building, let's say, if they are totally not subject to zoning laws? So that's that's my comments, and I would love to hear a response.
Thank you very much. We can come back and address that, and I think that they're they're they are still subject to, by the way, the thirty-foot height coastal limit. So no five-story building would be built there. Next up, Amy, please. Helen Camp.
Okay, I'm gonna try to speak, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. My name is Amy Helen Camp, I am a resident nearby, Mariposa Drive. We've lived here since ninety-eight. I'm really grateful that the Torrey Pines Planning Board's looking at this and reviewing it because I feel that there's been a lot of deception, a lot of, a lot of disingenuousness, dishonesty in this process. And let's start with the, well, we'll start with the biggest one, which is that all through the CQ docs, everything, the schools pretend that the portables are part of the permanent structure of that facility. They are not. They are, if the equivalent would be if I, as a homeowner, went to Home Depot, bought some sheds, put them around my yard, and then tried to argue twenty years later that I should build a five thousand square foot house, because I've always had that. That's nonsense. It's a three thousand square foot house with some ugly sheds that should be torn down. And that's exactly what they have up there. They have a school that was originally approved for about three hundred sixty, and they're pretending it's a school for five hundred. Every comparison is, well, it's better than the portables. The portables shouldn't be there. What needs the comparison, it's not a comparison to what's there and something new. This is a fragile, sensitive piece of land, and it needs to be reviewed to see if this is the best possible fit for this property. And they are massively increasing a parking lot. They are massively increasing traffic onto that campus, and they are increasing the number of students. They say it's for five hundred, which would be enough of an increase, but they're actually approving it for six hundred. And they say they won't use it, but if it is there, they might. And the reality is, we approved a bond measure for two schools west of Five to stay open and going forward, and for a school to be built in Carmel Valley. And with the building of School Nine in Carmel Valley, the district knows that every Carmel Valley school will be under capacity. They will never need Carmel Valley students to come to Delmar. They will have, going forward forever, six hundred students to divide between two schools. And they are trying to put five hundred or six hundred on the campus of Delmar Heights. The traffic, the pollution, the runoff into the canyon, into the watershed, the feeds, the beach at Torrey Pines, that will be atrocious, and it's completely unnecessary. This should have, from the beginning, been an appropriately scaled project. Instead, they let the architects take it over. Our kids deserve
You could wrap it up, please.
I shall. The kids in this community, the community west of the Five, deserve the play space, the open space, and that canyon needs to be respected. And none of that has happened with this, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, next up, Ethan Frank, Frankie, forgive me if I if I destroy your name.
No, no problem, this is Ethan Frank. I live, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Ethan, I live two houses down from the school on Boquita Drive, so obviously I have a lot of interest in this in this rebuild. I currently have two boys who attend the school. And I'm gonna keep this short, really just in, I'm wanting to express my support for the rebuild as it currently stands. My family loves the staff at the school, but the facilities are woefully inadequate. I think that the the district has acted in good faith in eliciting community input on the on the design. Compromises have been made, and due diligence has been done. I'm disappointed that a group has found a lawsuit utilizing the same, that drove the Cardiff Elementary School rebuild. Further inspection of the leaders of this this group that hired this firm indicates potential subinterest as a motivating factor with respect to the preservation of their foreground views that lie ahead of their ocean views. And basic pattern recognition allows such parallels to be drawn. It's time to move on and get this project going and ignore any self-interests. That's all I have to say, to say, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ethan. Mike Milligan, up next?
Hi, everyone, I would like to echo Ethan as well, I'm totally supportive. I just, to Baker New Wiki, you know, you're building this school, you have five hundred wives involved. They built a couple of homes in Delmar with just one. You guys, this is a place in heaven for you guys, what you've been able to accomplish is great. When this started, we could have built a two-story building, we had a Little League that needed a new field. We needed to, we didn't want anyone to enter on Mary Montana. We had four other committee members around. We wanted low-slope roofs, we wanted HVAC on the ground, we didn't want to have anyone parking on the streets. We had so many different contingent groups pulling in every direction, and they designed it the way they designed it. And if we stop this process, similar to Ms. Dee, and redesign it, it's gonna end up the same way. If you want to satisfy all the contingents, it's gonna end up the same way. So we are totally wasting our time right now, it's very, very frustrating. The people that are opposing this are either Mary Montana residents, afraid the hills are gonna get closed. And I can't remember the other camp, but anyway, it's very frustrating to have people have brought a suit against the school. And let's build this thing.
Great. Thank you very much, Mike. Bryce Dixon, up next? You're still muted? Let's see, I can unmute you here.
I'm not muting myself, thank you.
Alright.
Hi. Hi, my name is Bryce Dixon, parent of
Hi, my name is Bryce Dixon, parent of a Delmar Heights student. I also went to the Heights. Um, I live on Twelve Street now. I grew up on San Diego Drive, uh, in Crest Canyon. Um, I'm, uh, in support of the rebuild. Uh, the school was, I, you know, I guess middle-aged, if not old, when I went there in the eighties. It's definitely past its prime at this point. Um, and like, uh, the first speaker said, these delays do not help in any, even the opposition. If this was their own project, there's no way that they would want to just sit around and debate minutia down to the last, you know, I mean, there's been so many, like Milligan just said, there's been so many different factions, and we've ceded, uh, people. I gave up a lot of stuff, because I'm a Little League board, and I wanted a field there, and we moved it to Torrey Hills, and we've all had to to do stuff that we didn't want to do, but we're just wasting money at this point. We need to knock the school down, rebuild it, and not have the time value of money collapse as we go on and potentially bad things are happening, what have you. It, it, it makes sense to build it while we can and while we have the money. We had a majority pass the bond. Um, we went through, uh, a period of time where I have a two, almost two-year-old who will go to Delmar Heights, who wasn't even conceived when we first started debating what we should do with this property. So I, I'm happy with what the board, uh, school board has done. I hope you guys are in favor of this and let the school be built as soon as we possibly can. Thank you for your time.
Nice, thanks. Uh, next up, uh, Sandit Patel?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, I'm in, I'm Sandit Patel. I am, I'm on Boquita, and I'm in strong support of honoring the democratic vote that led to the bond passing, uh, to allow for, uh, rebuild of Delmar Heights Elementary. Uh, the Torrey Pines Committee Plan has listed for school maintaining adequate facilities in school and fire, fire protection for the residents of Torrey Pines. And Policy Number Seven states that both Delmar Union and San Diego High School District should utilize every mechanism available to ensure that adequate school facilities are maintained. We currently have a school in which there's no running water for the majority of students. Can you imagine in the era, um, post-COVID-nineteen when these kids will hopefully finally be able to go back to school and not be able to wash your hands in a first-world country in Delmar? That's the current plan, and that's why the rebuild is so necessary. There's currently one fire hydrant at the entry of the border, which is nowhere near the canyon or preserve. And so if you care about the environment, you know wildfires are a big deal. The current plan puts the children at risk. It puts the preserve at risk, and the need for a rebuild with, as Chris mentioned, four fire hydrants is key. Uh, the rebuild fixes this, and it should proceed without delay, without another wildfire season. That puts the kids, and puts the property, puts everyone at risk. Um, there are multiple positive impacts of this rebuild, and part of this bond was that Delmar Heights Elementary, unlike every single other elementary school in this area, was deemed unable to be upgraded because it's so far away from code. This is the best plan we're gonna get. There's, this has taken months, if it's been over a year. If we, as Mike said, if we keep, uh, rolling the dice, we're just gonna end up with the same plan, and then the kids will be stuck in a fire unsafe surroundings. There's minimal fire protection, no running water for COVID hygiene, or whatever virus we're gonna face in the future. Um, and currently, we have a smock of armed individuals, many of whom you've heard from here and are gonna continue to hear from here, who personally profit from the suffering of our schoolchildren by preserving their views, their property values, um, trapping our kids in derelict facilities, using shadow corporations and lawyers to bully our schoolchildren. If you take a look at Delmar Height, if you take a look at the Delmar Times, they won't even talk to the media. They feel they're unaccountable. So they come on these calls, they spread fiction, they go on social media, they spread fiction, and the reason they have to hide behind these shadow corporations is because they know they're hurting our schoolkids. And so one of the things I'd like to call on this community planning group to do, uh, which is chartered to help build our community, is that we judge a community based on how it treats its schoolchildren and how it treats its children. And so to kowtow to the whims of a litigious and financially conflicted selfish few to risk the lives of hundreds of schoolchildren who will be in fire and, and viral unsafe settings if the rebuild doesn't go forward doesn't stand in the spirit of our community, doesn't stand in, frankly, the spirit of civilized society. And I'd like for this group to continue forward with the rebuild plan as, um, discussed, and as you're gonna hear from many individuals. This is extremely personal because it's not about education. It's not just about views. It's about safety, and it's essential to the planning group. It's central to our community. And I would ask this planning board, uh, to honor the commitment that has been made on the democratic vote to proceed with the rebuild for the protection of our children. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, next up, Sheila Krishna?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sheila Krishna, and I wanted to come here tonight to state my strong support for the Delmar Heights Elementary School Rebuild. I am a resident on Boquita. We have a strong interest in seeing our children go to a safe school. The school as it stands now, as many of us have said, is not in a good condition for our children to learn. It's not safe from a fire safety perspective, and without running water in the portables represents a COVID or future virus danger. I'd like to encourage the planning board tonight to support the Delmar Heights School Rebuild. Please know that the vast majority of the community does support the rebuild. The stakeholders have all been included, as everyone has said tonight. There are a few people who do not want this to move forward, but please know that the vast majority of the community supports the rebuild, and we hope that you do as well. Uh, thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight, and, uh, have a great evening.
Sheila, thank, uh, Robert McGraw's up next?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, this is, uh, Bob McGraw, and I have a couple of kids who will be going to, uh, the Heights, uh, this year and into the future. I'd just like to say that I really would like the board to, uh, pass or, uh, provide a recommendation for going forward with this. Uh, we've been going through this process for like two years now. Even longer if you go all the way back to, uh, uh, Measure MM. And since we started this process, the district has done nothing but solicit community input. And it's really frustrating from a parent's standpoint to see the type of lies and, uh, misstatements that are going on in the community. I mean, people are still going out there saying that there's gonna be six hundred and some students going to this school. That is not the fact. This has been refuted many times. There seems to be an effort by moneyed landowners, uh, who are worried about their view. There seems to be an effort by people who live in the neighborhood who want to shove our students out into other schools. They don't want their kids in their neighborhood. And I, you know, enough's enough. Yeah, let's pass the recommendation. Let's get on with this project. Uh, you know, we're gonna have a very disruptive year coming ahead. We certainly do, don't need the second one. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next up, Arzo Nasir?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Um, my name is Arzo Nasiri, and, um, I'm a Delmar resident. I live maybe about four blocks away from the school. I have three kids, two of whom attend Delmar Heights, uh, one who's a little too young right now, but will plan to be there in a couple of years. Uh, at any rate, I'll try to make this short and sweet because I really do appreciate all the work of the Torrey Pines Planning Group. I know it's a thankless job, and we appreciate it. I did want to say I am in full support of the rebuild. Uh, you're gonna be hard-pressed to find, um, a bigger nerd than me when it comes to civic engagement. I'm a big believer in it. But I'm not a big believer in special interests, and that's where this has gone. This process has taken a sharp left turn, and it's become, uh, unfortunately, not about civic engagement and civic participation, but rather people's own, um, personal wants and desires. So this is really just a classic case of a small group of folks who weren't happy with the way that things turned out, and I'm sorry for them, but honestly, we've heard every excuse in the book along the way. Uh, the next thing I'm, I'm prepared to hear is that we can't move forward, forward with the rebuild because the moon is in its third phase. So short of that, I would say, please, let's move on and, uh, get this, get the, the school built. Thank you so much.
President, thank you. Um, Anna West up next, please.
There you go. Hi there. Thank you, everyone, um, for taking the time to review this project. We, uh, really just appreciate it. We've been in Delmar for about ten years now since my first was in my belly, and we moved here specifically to, um, just come to the wonderful place that is Delmar, the beaches, the community, um, the slower, um, land value, um, environmental, all of it, just we love it all, but especially the schools. And when we toured Delmar Heights and Delmar Hills, we loved them both. Uh, but ultimately, the best fit was at the Heights for our daughter, who is now nine years old. So we've got a nine-year-old and an incoming kindergartner who will be one day hopefully coming back to the Heights once it's rebuilt. And we just wanted to voice our support as a family for the rebuild. Um, the process that has gone on, um, I've been involved in the school and on the board in the past. And, uh, the school, the, uh, Delmar Heights PTA School Board, that is, and, um, you know, we've been a part of this process for a long time now, and there has been many questions asked, many, um, concessions made, many hopes that this can be, uh, just a wonderful place for the kids, uh, today, but also the future, and really, that's what Delmar deserves. So I just wanted to say the Wester is full support, and we are hopeful that once this, uh, this project finally moves forward, one way or the other, uh, that it will be, uh, what, what needs to happen for our families and for our community. And, uh, just thank you for your time.
Anna, thank you. Uh, Jennifer Masara up next?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you, um, to all of you for, um, hosting this meeting. I've been quiet, but I've been present on every one of these meetings. Um, and I'm just wanting to be sure my voice is heard on behalf of my family. We um, have two girls that are at Delmar Heights. We, uh, specifically bought a home in the neighborhood to send our kids to Delmar Heights. Uh, they were coming into the second grade and fourth grade. We've also recruited friends of ours to move to the neighborhood that have young kids because we believe so much in the school and the teachers at Delmar Heights, and, um, quite honestly, on behalf of, uh, me and my husband, we're we're ready for this to be put to rest and have the school be rebuilt. Um, I can't believe we're still here and having the same circle of conversations with seem to be the same group of people that are trying to hold up a project that has been voted on, um, by the community, and, um, it's time to, uh, think about the future of the kids and, uh, rebuild the school as it's intended. I have no background in, um, you know, legal and a lot of areas that a lot of, uh, the, the friends on here do have, and I respect where they've come from. Um, but I thought you should hear from just regular parents that have a very huge vested interest in seeing this school be rebuilt. Um, and know that if I were to walk out my front door right now, I could look left and right and down the street, and every single house would agree with me. Um, so thank you for listening, and let's rebuild the school.
Jennifer, thanks. Uh, so with that said, I'd like to, um, ask anyone else that would, uh, has an interest in speaking to please raise your hand. And if not, uh, oh, Vicky, I see your hand being raised. Uh, so yes, I will unmute you and give you the floor.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Vicky Miranda. My family moved to Delmar in nineteen seventy-nine, and ten days after we moved here, I gave birth to our seventh child. Um, I have committed my life to children. Um, stayed at home, um, wrote the first newsletter for Delmar Hills, for Delmar Heights, for Earl Warren. My counsel was suggesting we get mass pots. And, um, oh, I, I think I'm so, um, don't quite know how to express myself tonight because I, there's so much I want to share. I'm a little late here, as far as you guys probably haven't heard from me before. Um, my husband and I raised these seven kids, and then we raised two more who just recently went through hills. So nine kids all in all, and he was an artist, amazing artist, and just recently, he was big, strong, healthy surfer guy, big surfing family, um, completing a painting to go to an art show, and his heart stopped. And it was just like that. It was just timeless. And so we don't have him with us now, and that was why I was not aware of what was going on, or I would have got um, involved sooner. Um, so here I am. And I, I have no self-interest. All those years we've lived here, forty, forty-one years, we never bought a house. But we've always been deeply committed to this area and to supporting happiness for families in our community. Um, so bottom line, that field is just the most unique, beautiful piece of land. It's not just a field. It's not just another school. It's not the school like all the fields up Delmar Heights Road, Ashley Falls, and they're great. Kids need a place to play. Communities need a place, but this is not just another field. This is this amazing property overlooking the ocean and the canyon. And we spent hours and hours of our life there, our whole community did. And at that time, we were so much smaller, and we all knew each other, and we all supported, um, the, the, what that's, that land gave our families and our kids is you can't, you can't put a value, you can't estimate the value of, of the impact that the kids having that space made to their lives. I love education. I love schools. I volunteered in all nine classes. Um, I love the teachers. I love everything about school, being creative. Family, I would design a school that was way out there, just amazingly creative. So yes, we need to rebuild that school. Whoa, no doubt. It's gotta be done. But building it around the field, not taking most of the field. I don't understand, because I am a late joiner here, why such a large school? Why can't we build the school around the field, making that field exempling for our children how precious the environment is, how you can't replace that? We could replace the Ashley Falls School Field. It's just a field, but we can't replace land like that.
Vicky, thank you. I'd ask you to wrap things up, please.
Okay, so, um, I wish, uh, I, I want to say in closing, I can feel the frustration and the needs of everyone to have a beautiful school and to meet the kids, their kids' needs in that way. Um, can we build? I feel like it's gonna be naive. I know you've gone through so much already. We just build two repair hills, two nice medium schools that teaches our children the, um, the value of our environment. I want to add quickly, I promise, last thing. The last two kids my husband and I took on were high-needs kids. They were delayed in their emotional development, their mental development, their social development, you name it. And I know that that field created that kid's need for emotional development. Um, there is a mental health crisis in our country.
What happened?
You've got to value
A number of people to get to.
The environment and the
Vicky, I'm sorry. I had to mute you for a second so you could hear me. Um, really, we have to wrap it up. Thank you. Um, Kelly Hunter up next, please? You have to unmute yourself, Kelly.
Oh, greetings. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, wonderful. Um, thank you so much to the review board. I am hoping, I'm greatly hoping that this meeting will be the start of a real community review that addresses the safety, environmental, environmental, and overall drastic change that does not align with our community plan. This process started with many community residents not knowing planning meetings were actually happening. If you're a parent or a teacher at the school, you knew, you knew everything about the planning meeting. Everyone else was left out of the communication. Those that did attend were promised follow-up emails and reminders for future meetings. They never happened. When the architect presented images in September, and when he was asked if the images were accurate, his response was, "Well, by law, schools do not need to be accurate." We saw these inaccuracies throughout the process, including the SECA MND, which has multiple factual embellishments, mistakes, and opinions when it comes to the safety of our community. In fact, in the SECA, the district conveniently did not check the coastal box or wildfire, even though placework said at the last board meeting that they knew the school was in the coastal zone. You have to ask yourself, why is that happening? There's been no accountability to this plan. Department of State Architecture says that they are only responsible for approving students' ability to exit classrooms. There is no overall fire safety for the school property. They have no, they have no approval over the overall evacuation. I spoke to someone at the city who said, "Well, we assume DSA is taking care of it." There's clearly a huge gap here. The process has been like working through a used car salesman, who tells the public whatever they want to hear, just because they can. I love the school district. I have three kids that just graduated from there. I love the teachers, and I want to see the school built. However, this process has been very disheartening. Based on the lack of transparency, I spoke to San Diego's premier fire expert. He looked at the overall site. His response was, "This is very troubling. There's only one way in and one way out. This is a dead end, and the community will only be able to exit out Mercado. Fire will jump over Cordero and cause the entire school population and community to, everyone will have to exit out Mercado." He said, "This is extremely troubling. This needs to be reviewed." We ask that the Torrey Pines Planning Board bring the oversight to this overall process that is so desperately needed. Thank you.
Kelly, thank you. Anyone else that would like to?
Yes, Irene Young. Hello?
Next up, I have Lena Lu. Please, has a hand raised. Let me, let me get back to you, Laura. And Irene, let me get back to you as well. I have one other hand raised, and then we'll come to you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lena Lu. I'm a parent at Delmar Heights. And, you know, we moved here about six years ago from New York City because, specifically for the school system and for the wonderful neighborhood and the environment that we live in today. You know, I am on the PTA, I was on the PTA board. I ran the arts program at the school. And, you know, I do want to address some of these last issues because, you know, as it relates to the field, you know, we've had significant input from the community and from, you know, the PE teacher at Delmar Heights. And there's plenty of room for the kids to enjoy the area. I am there every weekend. My daughter pitches, and I would go every weekend for pitching lessons. And there was never anyone more than ten people on the field at one point in time. So, there's plenty of room for everyone to enjoy the green space that's there. And then, on the second side of the input from community, I've been at every single meeting, every single meeting. And it's been perfectly announced. There's been tons of community input between parents, teachers, all across the board, neighborhood. Everyone has been informed. I mean, there, I've been to, it's so much time. And it's just time right now. This is the best plan. We've looked at two stories. I'm fine. We were fine looking for two stories. You know, and, and that was a consideration. But this was the best, as a, as other parents have said, concession in terms of across the board. And it's just time. It's just time to build right now, as soon as possible. We're ready to go, and we're ready to get our students back into school as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Laura DiMarco, did you want to speak?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Hi, Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura DiMarco, a thirty-three-year resident of Delmar, whose five children attended the Hills and the Heights schools. My family voted for the bond measure. We support a new Delmar Heights school, but not this plan without modifications. Given the high wildfire danger from the adjacent Torrey Pines Preserve, all new school buildings should be sited one hundred feet away, which is the minimum distance in the fire code for defensible space. One hundred feet away, that is, from the Torrey Pines Preserve. Unfortunately, the current plan places some of the buildings within the hundred-foot defensible space, which prevents the five hundred, over five hundred children, ten percent with disabilities, and over twenty staff members to safely shelter in place. With a fast-spreading wildfire and no buses available in the district, it is very difficult to safely evacuate five hundred five-to-twelve-year-old children who would have to leave by foot or in one of the hundreds of cars from panicked parents. In addition to increasing safety for these vulnerable children, this hundred-foot setback helps meet the goals of the Torrey Pines Community Plan by preserving the school's existing playing fields. The proposed project actually reduces playing fields and blacktop space by two and a half acres, when there already is in the community plan a notable deficit of fifteen-point-three acres of usable parkland. You can look at the community facilities element, page eighty-nine. It also preserves scenic ocean view parkland and scenic vistas that Vicky so eloquently talked about with her children that are protected by the City of San Diego's LCP. Look at the visual resources element, especially if the roof height is reduced to a maximum of twenty feet. New legislation, SB three-seventy-nine, requires this wildfire safety element of the Torrey Pines Community Plan be updated for these wildfire hazards. It should also be noted that the current Torrey Pines Community Plan states that students are transported by buses to and from Delmar Heights School. The plan never intended for the buses to be replaced by hundreds of cars necessary to transport over five hundred students daily on a dead-end street in the middle of a high wildfire hazard area. In addition, the original environmental impact report and permits were for a capacity of three hundred and fifty students that has been expanded to over five hundred students with temporary portables. This plan makes this high capacity that was never permitted to be permanent and increases the wildfire risk. This pandemic also shows the importance of outdoor space for the safety of our children. Please follow the Torrey Pines Community Plan and the LCP approved by the Coastal Commission by shifting the project back a hundred feet away from the wildfire danger, preserving the community's scarce parkland, protecting public ocean view corridors that are protected by the Coastal Act, and our play areas, and increasing the safety of our community's children. Thank you very much. I also wanted to comment that I'm a big supporter of Delmar Heights School. When my children were there, we were very large donors to the foundation and all the programming they had. I feel in a way cheated, because when I first started in the process and went to the few of the meetings, they told us how important this open space was and preserving the fields. And we were never told the actual reduction by over two and a half acres, even after they quote-unquote "made concessions." So, this is not the plan that we thought that we were gonna get, that we voted for. That is costing us fifty-five million dollars for a new, huge school. Thank you.
Laura, thank you very much. Irene Young, please.
Thank you. Laura really spoke for a lot of us. I just want to tell the people in the community planning group, of which I was in for over six years. And all during those six years, we were looking for open space and never could find it. And now, you're taking what little bit we have for a bunch of buildings. And let me tell you also that these people that have spoken tonight and have downgraded and talked about those of us who do not want the plan and the size of the school, like we have personal interests. It doesn't matter to me as far as my location goes. But it matters to the hundreds of people that walk up to Miramontana and out to the trail every single week and enjoy the beauty of living here. And you want to put a bunch of buildings there. Not only that, on agreements with Laura, we were not told what the plan was initially. That's why we went ahead with it. We were, they kept avoiding the question of, "What are you gonna do about travel?" And also, "What are you gonna do about the fourteen, fifteen parking places and drive up, all along with the pollution of the cars idling right next to the classrooms, not even talking about view?" All these children are going to be getting the fumes from the cars. There are parents that are waiting for their children to get out of school. It's horrible, horrible plan. You lose your visual stuff, and you lose your park. And let me tell you, I was really disappointed when I heard teacher's main comment was they didn't like having to stand out in the field and watch the kids play. Well, let me tell you, I was a teacher for twenty years, and I loved being out there watching the kids play. I taught everything from preschool to high school seniors. And that was a pretty sad comment. And I resent people that have been speaking tonight saying that it was only a few people talking for their own personal enjoyment or whatever. It's not. It's for the community. I had my grandchildren talk. I had my daughter talk. The neighbor's kids all talked. For months and months and months against this. So, it's not just a few people. Granted, they want their view. I don't care. I don't have a view that'll be affected. But, but why ruin, why ruin it and double the size of a school? For what purpose? Once you build that school, you'll never have that land again. It's too precious to let it go.
Irene, thank you very much. Is there someone else? I'm sorry, did I miss someone? Wanted to speak that hasn't? Very good. That said, let's open it up for discussion then amongst us. Remember, on the committee, that would like to start? You're gonna have to unmute yourselves. Dan?
How's that?
Better. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I, just a couple of questions for the, I guess, is it the architect? Or who's, is it the board representative? First of all, is the idea they're gonna close the other school or not? I don't know. I'm not a parent of a kid going there, so I feel out of the loop, unfortunately, on a lot of these things. So, is Delmar Hills School gonna be closed for the benefit of this school? Second question is, what is the actual square footage of this school? And what is the estimated cost for this school? I just heard fifty-five million dollars. And if you could answer those questions, and also, how did you come up with the amount of parking required? It seems like the balance of this project has been emphasizing parking and circulation and not, not carpooling, not van pooling, not buses, not kids walking to school. So, those are just some basic questions I could get answered. Then maybe we can discuss some of the other things that are important on this project.
Okay. Let's, let's have the applicant answer that. John or Chris?
I'll step in. I'm sorry, I jumped into speaking. I didn't share who I am. I'm Chris Delahanty. I'm the Executive Director of Capital Programs and Technology for the school district. So, I work in the school district and oversee our facilities planning. So, first of all, Delmar Hills is not planned to be closed. Delmar Hills is actually prioritized to be the first modernization after our Delmar Heights School rebuild and our Pacific County Ranch School and the night. The board has just approved an architect to do a modernization. So, we are working through that and hope to begin some community planning for that in the fall. And Delmar Hills is slated to have an overall project cost for this initial modernization of approximately thirteen million dollars. So, the district is committing money to Delmar Hills. The district is committed to Delmar Hills being a school. To the square footage and cost, John or Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but the square footage is a little over sixty-six thousand square feet. The cost is currently based on our soft costs, combined with the lease-back costs. We look at approximately fifty-six million dollars, which is the budget for the project. The final costs won't be finalized until, we're seeing DSA approval, Division of State Architect approval, which is required of a school. And then with parking, you mentioned parking. The give-or-take eighty spots are in alignment with the number of spots for the staff and student body at this site compared to other schools in our district. While we would encourage and do encourage walk to school, bike to school, we actually believe that, and based on the input from the community during the design process, in conjunction with the analysis placeworks did on the traffic in the vicinity of the project, that by bringing much of that traffic off of the surface street and onto the school site, by bringing the queuing onto the school site, you will have much less of the issue that you currently have with all of that queuing on Boquita. It makes it potentially a little more dangerous to ride a bike, because we also have all of the parking on Boquita. It really kind of backs up that street. So, the goal, actually, which was shared by our community, was one of the main priorities, was to bring parking and traffic off of the city streets and onto the school site as part of our design process.
Dan, anything else for the moment?
No, that's good.
Guys, I've got a couple of questions. Adam Givanthar here. The concept of brush management and the requirement for, actually, I guess, essentially your circumvention of the complete hundred feet through alternative compliance, which is allowable, is allowed under the fire code. Do you plan on doing any off-site mitigation? Or any off-site fuel management treatment? Or will your brush management or wildlife management, wildfire management be handled entirely on-site?
We're focused on the on-site, and then at the direction of the fire authorities, we take care of brush management that is necessary outside the fence line. We've really looked at, within the fence line, also the combination of where are the situater students and then the building and construction site. And then, John or Scott, if you have anything you would add.
So, let me just, so I heard you correct, Chris. Are you, you're saying that there is a component to your brush management plan that will occur off-site? Did you, is that what you said?
I'm saying that we have, at the direction of the code enforcements, when directed, we take care of the brush management that is outside of the fence line.
Okay, so you're saying there's a possibility that the district will be required to prune thin impacts seventy feet into the resource, into the, into the reserve area, potentially? That is still to be determined, because it sounds like you don't have improved brush management plan. Is that correct?
Well, we're finalizing the, yeah, so we're finalizing that with the city as part of this coastal development plan.
Okay, so there's no approved brush management plan. So, the thirty feet that you're showing for brush management is, at this point, it's not really defined. That leads me to my next question with regard to the fire safety. Is there, is there an evacuation plan that's been developed or in the process of being developed?
We follow the district's... In school sites, evacuation plans, that's part of a school-based and... And then we've looked at the improvements made to be able to allow for both easier ingress and the ability of our emergency management to get onto sites based on the improvements that we made.
Will this, so there will be a formalized evacuation plan developed that meets presumably state guidelines?
Please describe a formalized evacuation plan.
I'm sorry?
And, and, and what, when you're saying a formalized evacuation plan, what are you, what guideline, I, I guess that's what I'm.
I'm just wondering, is there a state guideline or it's a fire marshal mandate as part of their, their, their fire management plan? Some sort of evacuation plan in this situation, given that it's a public facility? In the event of a wildfire, I mean, wildfire, how are, I mean, how are people transported from, from site? I mean, is there, because we're talking about a level of service on residential streets that probably wasn't anticipated when the school went in initially. So the question is, is can people and, and emergency vehicles circumnavigate the streets in the event of, of, of some event?
So I, I'd have to look, I don't know that I have a, a, I guess what I'm looking at is, are you thinking of something that does a study of that or that is a plan for the evacuation or something in the middle?
Well, I think a, a study, I mean, something that, that is, is looked at by an expert who's expert in these things more than the general public is, that can give us assurance that, that yes, that the number of people that are, that are planned to be at that school can be removed from site safely in the event of, of a fast-moving wildfire. Or not. Yeah, I mean, it's obviously an issue and of concern, so I just bring that up.
I think that's a great, I, I, I was not able to coordinate to have our, Duane Myers and Placeworks be here and I would like to follow up with him a little bit on that because they did the study related to all of the AA traffic in the area. So I, I don't have the exact answer for you, but I can, I will follow up on that.
So I'm just gonna continue to go through my questions, just from members of my committee, if you don't mind while I'm on it. There was a question about the, that was brought up about the residential cul-de-sac. And the, the city's own street design manual has a maximum, a level of service, maximum ADT recommendation for those streets. Again, it just sort of ties to that. You know, the, the street networks support that, you know, that size of student body. And, you know, in terms of how you derive, you came about, came to that, that number of students, you know, I don't know. I'm not part of that and I'm not really interested in that right now. I just want to know that the infrastructure is there to support what you're proposing for that site. Secondly, going forward, I would hope that you would, you would solicit more direct input from state parks with regard to the development reserve edge, wild, uh, wild edge. Because it sounds like the only comments that you've gotten from state parks, which is typical in a project like this, is just a response mitigated to the MND as part of the public, public comment period.
With that and a meeting to be held with them prior to the, the MND.
Okay, but did they have the benefit of actually looking at your landscape plan and, and have the ability to comment on your plant list and, and specifics? Was that a part of their review? If not, I would hope that that would be a part of their review because, you know, when we have projects that are built adjacent to the reserve, we, the ideal is for us to have any plants that are in that transitional zone and/or next to the reserve be planted with, with actual plant material that's been harvested from the area so that it's endemic to the region. Let's see, let me just go through my list here. Visual analysis that was in the MND didn't specifically address impacts to the recreational user, i.e. people on the trails, the trail user. I'm hoping that you can maybe talk about that, why that wasn't addressed or maybe it wasn't, I just missed it. You just continue to go through my list if you don't mind. Give me one second. Let me leave it at that and let you address that. Questions, but I want to get to them later.
Adam, I did ask about that item and in speaking with Placeworks in their review, they did share that the visual impact analysis was done from Durango Drive because that location was selected because you could view the site and see the buildings from the preserve. So it was an effort to look at what visual impact you might have. And that lower in the preserve, you would have less of visual impact because of the slope and the topography and the intervening brush and trees.
Not demonstrated anywhere in the study, that's just an assumption. So that might be something that you might want to demonstratively show that, that, that from the, the trails, that the school isn't visible because of intervening vegetation. Because right now, we can only assume that that's the case, but it, it may very well not be. So just for whatever that's worth at this point. Also, I wonder if you could discuss the, the, again, show us the, how trailheads interface with the larger community-wide circulation network and how it say might be possible for children to walk from, say, the Delmar Terrace community or any location along Carmel Valley and actually walk to school rather than having to drive to alleviate some of the surface traffic?
Hey, Adam.
Yeah.
Raising my hand, could we kind of show that little exhibit we prepared for you, maybe discuss it in that reference to that?
Yeah, give me a second.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
Because, let me just chime in here. This is, we're reviewing this as a community resource, not just as parents of students there. This is a public facility, it's one of the major projects that we're ever gonna see in the Torrey Pines Planning area. And unfortunately, we were left out of the loop on this until late in the game. I don't know why, maybe because we don't individually have students going to the school, I hope that's not the case. But the big issues we need to look at are how this affects our community and how views or in the use of the field and all that are maintained with a new development there. So this is a kind of an idea of something that probably should have been addressed earlier and possibly could be done without disrupting the design per se. So the idea is to create a public trail around the rim of the site, provide access for the public to walk through and, and take the most fantastic views in, in Delmar Heights probably, across the reserve, down to La Jolla and the ocean and everything now. And could be a multipurpose thing with fire lane also. And reconnect the trails. I've, I've walked up those trails and all of a sudden you can't even get to the school. You have to walk around the streets. Even to get over to the Durango and the other streets, you gotta go way down, there's just no connections anymore. Somebody's decision for security perhaps, but is it necessary? And so this is kind of a, a concept. Adam, go ahead and continue your thoughts.
Well, as Dan said, you know, this is just showing potential linkages to the greater trail network. But right now, there, I, I believe, Chris, the way you were describing it, there was only one point of, of egress, one trail, one connection point to the, the reserve, the extension trails.
That's correct, at the southeast where you have your bottom right arrow.
Actually, if I could interject, Chris, this is a great graphic because it points to something that I think we thought was a great opportunity and the district really wanted to see happen. And that is to create a community connection at both the north end and the south end. And to create that, that continuous pathway all the way around that rim, which doesn't exist today. And with that, opening up that northern end to create a public space, a sort of a, a little neighborhood pocket park, if you will, for the community to be able to get close to the edge and see things. So that pathway, for all intents and purposes that you've drawn there, connects from the end of Bucita through the public park area that we created, around the perimeter, the canyon rim, around the new field, and exits in an accessible pathway to the cul-de-sac at the south end of Mira Montana. We don't have the purview of creating gates and access points into the preserve. But that opportunity now exists with this new pathway along that edge. And that was the idea and I, I, I'm glad to see that you see the same merit because we believe that that was a great opportunity for the community to get close to the canyon and be able to connect with it.
Well, I don't think it perhaps gives you some other opportunities to provide some additional landscape buffering between the reserve and the building here, maybe some more defensible space. I, I think you're gonna have, personally think you're gonna have a problem with the fire marshal. And I, I might be wrong on this, but even with alternative compliance, your encroachment is gonna extend far beyond, may very well extend beyond your boundaries.
Well, that's, that's actually not the case. Part of the reason for that buffer there is because that is a fire lane that brings emergency vehicles around the west side of the buildings out to the hardcore areas to be able to protect the buildings, to be able to fight fires in the canyon, and connects to the fire lane that now comes around the east side in the parking lot as well. That's, that's part of the fire protection and it's already been signed off by the local fire marshal who's reviewed that, that emergency vehicle access plan.
Excuse me, John, is the property line for the school site actually down the slope?
Yes.
And where the outside, the O and outside is, it's way down the hill, correct?
It's quite a ways down the hill, particularly in that area near the public area that you.
That's what I thought. So there is mitigation area there, there's also plenty of room to do such a trail connection. I mean, that's where the amphitheater used to be, right? I mean, yeah.
It's, it's quite steep, so we probably don't want DSA involved in the design of that access point because under ADA, it would be quite intrusive to be.
Right, we're talking stay-reserved trail, yeah.
There you go.
So, I mean, this is, Dan just graciously donated his time to just do a quick study to look at the possibilities because realize this is, you know, it's, it's the end game for you in many ways. But, you know, how could we, we put on the plan and bring it more in line with our community plan policies? So.
Actually, there's almost nothing that we've seen in your policies that this plan is in violation of. As a matter of fact, it made every effort to try to respond appropriately. There's no invasive plants in the landscaping plan. There's only a few periodic things that aren't actually, actually, you know, you know, from the area indigenous. And they could be replaced, but they're, they're very minimal. As a matter of fact, a lot of the planting throughout the campus is intended to replicate beachfront conditions with sand and, and the same kinds of plants that you might find along the coastline up in, in the northern California. So. There's the view corridors, if you've looked at some of the imagery, the view corridors across, from the cul-de-sac at Mira Montana and from the end of the street at Bucita, both widely open up those views to the ocean with the field in the foreground. The buildings are pushed up tight against that eastern slope, so, and all the mechanical systems are all on the ground. So there's very little that's gonna obscure any kind of view whatsoever across. So we tried to do a great job of trying to respect what the community told us was their priorities. But I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't discount the issues associated with student safety and, and community safety with regard to the current traffic problems in that community, the, and the parking throughout the community, the queuing lines and everything else. Those are, those are huge issues for this community. And there's bottlenecks built into the, the, the street layouts in, at the northern end of Bucita that we don't have any jurisdiction over, but the city does. We can try to get as much of this traffic and things off of the community streets and alleviate that in this process and, and, and improve the environment for the entire community as much as possible. And that's what this plan is trying to do.
So, I, I, you know, I realize and there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of concern about the loss of active field space, especially in the community that, that is already at a deficit. But it seems like perhaps a plan like this would allow more opportunities for, for community use, especially with, you know, the potential of a, of a fence relocation. Is that, would that even be a possibility for the district?
So Adam, you're saying the fence being relocated and community to have access to that field during the school day?
That's just a question I'm throwing out there.
Not necessarily, wait, wait, I don't think necessarily we're thinking that. I mean, there still could be a, I think the main concept is not to have it locked off from public use after school hours or something like that. I mean, it could be much as has it been over the, over the years, a multi-use type field. So I don't know, it's just an idea.
I would almost consider that you don't need that security fencing because we intend to allow the community to use the blocktop. So I think that we would, I, I do not see us allowing access to the field during the school day because there's a need for the students to be able to access it and not have others on it. However, outside the school day, I, I would even say that I, you know, as John spoke to, our goal was to provide access from Bucita around, take advantage of those vistas by getting those portables out of the, out of the way and having an actual kind of canyon rim path that would come around that is, or you could loop back around and come back out to Bucita if that's where you want to go. And so I, I, I think that, yes, as John said, you are really kind of in line with what we're thinking. I'm not sure whether we'd be able to do the, the further trail connections, but it's something that we can take a look at.
Perfect. Well, we can send you, send you back with this and perhaps we could take a look at it and see if we can get some more direction on this. I, I just wanted to, to note that in speaking with the city, I was informed that the, that the district is under absolutely, you know, no obligation whatsoever. I guess I said this before, support us with, with active fields. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate that while we're losing fields, there's always a balance in these types of projects, a give and take. Just going through my list here and see if there's anything I may have forgotten that I wanted to ask you about.
Adam, can we also just ask the question about the, the terrorist concept, we called it? In other words, reducing the footprint of this, this is very valuable land. And, and if it's a sixty million dollar project to begin with, most commercial projects are gonna have parking underground or under the building per se. Was that explored? Because this, as many speakers said, I think everyone agrees, this is a very valuable and, you know, priceless piece of land, really. And we're essentially doing a one-story building over the whole site. It sounds like there's Mira Montana residents that didn't want this encroaching upon or blocking some of their views. But is there a reason that we, that that wasn't pursued or was it pursued? Adam, can you pull that up or is it lost?
Well, I could, I could offer a couple of responses because we work with a lot of public school districts around Southern California and have for thirty years. The idea of underground parking on, on this hill would be cost prohibitive.
Up underground, the surface parking, same parking lot, but built over the top of it?
Well, you know, we could have saved a lot of land by building a multi-story school and we do a lot of those. However, in, in balancing the needs and desires and the wishes of the broader community, all of whom were concerned about being able to, you know, see across the site and enjoy the breezes and everything else, not have it blocked by a tall building, we opted with a lot of community support to keep the buildings low, to keep them one-story and even to design them in really kind of a coastal California style with very low slope roofs and, and keeping equipment off the tops of them. So the answer is, yes, when you have expensive land, you build up. That's what happens downtown, that's what happens in, in Carmel Valley, Surrano Valley, the rest of them. But on this site, it, for every one neighbor that was happy, there'd be another neighbor who'd be very unhappy.
Exactly, the trade-off is, we lose the open space and we have, I mean, you might encroach on a few views. This is just a concept, lock modeling. But it does hide the parking, it does increase the open space. There's three or four houses on Mira Montana and may or may not affect their first floor views. But I think you got, you got almost twenty-five, thirty feet of elevation change there anyway, do you not?
Well, not quite that, not quite that much.
Okay, but it's close, so.
Let me, let me, let me point out, I can tell you about, there's a lot of concern about a loss of open space. But let me, let me, let me point out, comment about, there's a lot of concern about a loss of open space. The grass area on this site, even as it's designed, is still the largest park area that you have in your community. It's over two acres of, of grass, and it did, it did reduce the grass size a little bit. A lot of that grass area wasn't very usable, because it was a regulation Little League field, the district is rebuilding that Little League field on another school site to support the, the community athletics. This field will be all grass, it'll be multi-use, you can play softball, you can play soccer. So if you think in terms of its usability, as opposed to just its square footage, there's a great deal to be gained. There's also, the, the open space has now been somewhat segregated around the campus to create special areas like the open park in the north end, the kindergarten area, which is segregated off for younger kids, and some expanded outdoor plaza seating amphitheater, as well as, as recreational play areas for, for kids of different ages. And so it's a different configuration. Is the field size so small that it's inadequate to do what you would want to do on a community park site? That's totally not true. It's large enough for a regulation soccer field, you can break it up into smaller soccer fields, there's a, there's a million things you can do on that field, so from a flexibility standpoint, this field's actually an improvement over what's there today. If we only count square footage, then we fail. But if we look at it programmatically, this field is gonna provide a great deal of benefit to the community, and you've got a school district who willingly leaves their fields and playgrounds completely open to the community for use after hours and on weekends, which is a terrific asset for the community. I can tell you, there are a lot of school districts that we work with that do not do that, because their risk managers say otherwise.
And I'll add to John, John talked about programmatic, we did review two-story, we reviewed it with staff, we reviewed it with the school board, and there are a couple of other things. Ed Code will not allow us to place students under third grade on the second floor, which, which plays into the flexibility of a space. And part of the instructional design focus was around having a classroom locations, some collaborative learning space that used our interiors, so that the hallways were not wasted space and exterior space, so our kids can learn inside and outside and collaborate across multiple classrooms, multiple spaces, and having the bulk of our classrooms on a second story really takes away from that ability to have our students be able to learn, which much of their day, we want to make sure we have more than adequate spaces for them to play outside, but also have more than adequate spaces for them to learn outside as well, being in, in San Diego and in Delmar.
Thank you. So, you know, I'm looking at this, and I, I assume that your boundary, the boundary on this, this district boundary right here is, is following my cursor, is that correct?
That looks about right.
Okay, so, my misinterpretation of, of the building relative to the reserve was it, was at the top of slope essentially coincided with the, with the reserve, with the reserve edge. So, yeah, the district does have, have a bit of space in here to deal with any of their offs, to deal with some offsite issue if they needed to, or to, to perhaps that perimeter trail. I just wanted to point that out.
That's correct, Adam.
Any other comments, guys, anybody on the board that like, would like to chime in?
Adam, can I say something?
Who is that?
That's Jake.
Oh, Jake, please.
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Yes, all right, perfect. So, you know, I think everyone is pretty much in agreement that the existing campus that's there obviously is in desperate need of rebuild. I think some people are obviously bringing up the points that, you know, there's, there's a couple of things that maybe potentially need improvement, and I'm not an expert, and that's why we're here tonight to listen to experts, but I guess the defensible space is one thing that I keep hearing is a reoccurring issue, potential issue, I should say. And the other would be just the outdoor, you know, park space, playground space, whatever you want to call it, field space. Is there any way that that can basically be worked into one, like a perimeter buffer? That would go as a field and fire break, if you will?
That, that, yes, that's exactly what they were talking about, is if, if there is a perimeter trail, that would, would serve a dual purpose, that becomes part of the defensive space. How that's incorporated specifically, you know, the design of which, you know, needs to be looked at with a little, little more detail. But, so, so, yeah, thank you for.
Adam, come on back to the other sketch.
Yeah, hold on a second, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, it sounds like for some reason that the perimeter trail wasn't really going to be an option, or maybe I heard that the fire marshal didn't approve that. I'm not sure if it was Chris that said that, or who was it that said that, but. So if a perimeter trail is not an option, why wouldn't a different form of fire break buffer space be an option in the form of maybe grass? Or something that's less, you know, flammable, less burnable? You know, as you know, Adam, that whole area, that extension area, it's chaparral, the primary plant community, you know, kind of it's left in the canyonlands of San Diego, very, very flammable, you know? Chamise, greasewood, if it goes up, it goes up very fast, it burns very hot. It just seems like we have one chance to build a fairer, we do it, you know, taking that fire break really more into consideration, keeping it at the forefront of everyone's minds, you know?
Hey, Jake, just to clarify, the perimeter trail on the, on the canyon edge is in the plans.
The one that's illustrated on the screen right now?
Yeah, we did the exact same thing, great minds think alike. We, we didn't make the connections where the arrows going out into the preserve, because that's not our purview, but the trail is a part of that, that, that canyon rib pathway is a part of our plans, that was the idea.
So, okay, so then what's, what's the difference between what we're looking at, the one we're looking at just has gates listed, or?
Well, all the little arrows going out to the left, we don't have all those, we have the access at the north end to the trail, all the way around through the property along the edge, and then a new a- a- access gear and accessible ramp on the south edge that goes out to the cul-de-sac at Miramontana. We didn't move the security fence line in, and I think we talked a little bit about that, but other than that, well, the boulders, we have to talk about the boulders, but we don't have the boulders.
Excuse us, but.
I think they'll roll down the hill.
Those are, those are trees.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And the idea, the idea is that this, I, we did see your indication of some kind of concrete path or whatever, DG path, inside the fence line. The idea is the fence line would be on the school side of the trail, so this would be a more natural feeling out to the reserve, not behind a chain link fence, which is a whole different feeling, so. That's kind of the concept here versus having it behind a chain link fence with, with gates and, and stuff like that, so the fence could be inside of this.
Well, I, I do have to say that the fence is on the other side, because it's also there for students during the school day and then open to the community, so there's a fence to look through, you're right. The height of that fence, the construction of that fence, those are probably still up for grabs from that standpoint. And then it also provides a little bit of a safety buffer, because along that canyon edge in several areas, it's, it's quite steep, it's not a hill, it's a cliff. And so from a safety standpoint, it's, it's helpful to have the fence there as well.
Well, it's 8:56, our meeting is till nine, I think at, at this point, our, our task was to really to kind of hash this out and try to identify what the key, the, the main issues, main sensitivities were with regard to this project. I'd like to take the next, just a few minutes to close it out and just try to summarize what I heard tonight. It appeared that, you know, we heard from a lot of people in complete support of this project as it was presented. We have a bond, we have a project that, that with money, we have a district that's willing to build this, and we have a timeline, so there's some urgency out there. But there's also valid, some valid concerns that have been brought up by other people just dealing with, with safety issues, particularly around wildfire issues. And I think really those are really gonna need to be explored further. Where this goes from here, we will just summarize these things that we discussed tonight, and they're gonna be forwarded to the board. The board meets this next Thursday, actually this Thursday, and they will decide on when to hold a formal hearing on this, taking into consideration the things that were discussed tonight. So everyone that was here tonight, please, I implore you to continue to participate, we're at the the endgame on this. Hopefully for those that are in support of the project, and for those that have issue with some of the outstanding issues, perhaps we'll be able to explore those further and get some answers for you and hopefully to your satisfaction. So with that said, I'd like to call this, make a motion to adjourn this meeting, and if I have a second, we can adjourn this meeting until our next scheduled hearing on this. Do I have a second?
Second, I'll second it too.
I guess all in favor, I don't even know if we have to do this, I apologize, we're, we're, it's nine o'clock, so with that said, I'm just gonna adjourn the meeting. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Adam, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam, I really appreciate it.
Please check our website, thank you, Chris, and everyone else that participated tonight, thank you, bye-bye. Thank you.